We'll call the meeting to order. We'll do a pledge allegiance, I'll see Chief Webb will lead us. Have they all want to do the road phone?
Justin? Alexis?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Jessica?
President.
Matthew?
Here.
Shy?
Shy is on his way. He'll get here shortly. Next item on agenda is the minutes of the Tuesday, May thirteenth council meeting two thousand twenty-five. As counsel, if they've got any corrections or changes, if not, I just need a motion to approve.
I'm in motion.
Alexis, my turn.
I'll second.
Second.
Alexis?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is public comment hearing. Does anybody got anything?
Comment tonight on uh city plant like on the mayor's report on city planning that like the lady being where we are.
Yeah, well, I mean, so we're still, we're still working on that. Uh, we've had a few meetings with her. Uh, she's there. They're drawing up the downtown kind of the outlook of it. We've looked at that's uh picked out a few, another spot of it. That's what we're gonna present. You know, it's one of the things for the citizens to kind of look at and decide on. And then uh they're supposed to be having, they'll be setting up some public, public hearings shortly. Uh, I don't know if that's gonna be within a month or whatever, but they want to have this whole thing done, I think, November at the end of this year. And uh, so I think it's all gonna start kind of rolling here pretty quickly.
Being done as far as like, where people can look at it?
No, no, like
Like done?
Done. Because we've been, we've been working on this. It's coming, I mean, we approved this, what? Four, four months ago? You know, so it's just a, just a little process. So uh but yeah, well, I think we're have two or three public comments. So they're, they're coming up. I mean, anything specific he's looking at there?
Curious, I didn't know if we were gonna if that one before we're gonna is it some of that where we had some of the citizens that were involved in uh meeting with her and just a public comment, how much from the public comments, like the change in committee.
Well, I think it's gonna uh from Justin and, and our mind and, and from what our vision was back there, I think a lot of it's gonna stay, you know, kind of what I think needs to be part of the city, you know, the area that's in the core of the city, back where you live, just two sixty-four, has more of your executive style houses, more of your bigger lots. Uh, just do the access off two sixty-four and how hard it is to get in and out of two sixty-four. And then uh up here on the, where it's flatter, going north, it'd be more of your then style housing uh development, still leaving majority of highway twelve, two sixty-four, part of two sixty-four, that's not uh hilly and stuff, all commercial. Now there, you can't leave the whole thing commercial, it may some spots gonna be residential, but you know, spots that are residential, we'll keep the houses off the roadway a ways instead of like it is right here, right across from the fire station where they're hooked right up on two, two sixty-four there. Um, so I think a bunch of that's uh that we discussed there, and then they're gonna go through and and look at some of our codes and bring them up to date, like see if the city streets are wide enough uh. Anything else, Jeremy, on that? You know, I, on just a bunch of codes to make sure our subdivision regulations are up, up to date, up to code, because the state has changed a lot of the stuff this year uh as far as what we can do.
My thoughts were coding specifically, I don't know, this may be a legal question, is it easier to change the code to match kind of what's your plan, you know, like hey, if we don't want this estate area to have, you know, more than so many houses per, you know, five acres or whatever, you know, it's easier to change the code of that rural area, you know, kind of coding where it may not match up versus later on trying to say, well, we don't, we just don't want this here, voting on that, is that a legal issue when they're matching and coding?
Well, we're, we don't have a, our only zoning that is uh the bigger lots are R, you know, and then R one, is that right, Jeremy?
Yeah, R R. One then R two.
Which, which one's your bigger one out of the R one and R two, R one? So uh we, we don't have any other, like your RR's is acre and above everything, you know, you can build it on a, a minimum of an acre or on five acres. And I mean, we don't have any other zoning as far as saying you can only put five acre lots in here. You know, we got, we got developer up off of Peterson, I think it's doing, how many, what's the acres on theirs? Three and a half. So it's, it's gonna, it's gonna, like we're, the, my office and Jeremy and I were uh actively uh encouraging bigger lots, you know, one acre, two, three acre lots, because it doesn't, it doesn't uh put pressure on our sewer system. You know, like, because the bigger lots can be on the septic tank and stuff, so uh and a lot of, lot of our growth, you know, as far as our sewer goes, is gonna stay right where our sewer line is. So city with the airport stuff going on, we're just not gonna be able to extend our sewer lines, you know, unless, unless a developer does it. Anything else?
Here's where we're at. The meeting, and everything, so that lady can be.
Yep, it's just a, just a, just a process, so we're we're getting there slowly. Uh, you get, anybody got anything else? All right. We'll close public comment. Next item on agenda is new business, the resolution two zero two five dash one zero. I'll let you read that resolution. Got it.
The resolution authorizing execution of the hay lease covering city property.
Uh, remember, I brought this to you guys a couple of months back. Uh, and we, on the map, we drew out where so there's no confusion on the person that releases it, that the dark area is not part of the hay lease, it's just, it's just the open field part. So, because we park a lot of our city equipment right there, uh, that's where we, we dig uh red clay out of the, out of the bank there, so last guy we had, there was some confusion, he got mad, so we, we terminated the lease. And then, so this should stop that, so we'll have to leave this out for, for two weeks, what Jay told me, and then I'll pick up, I guess, the highest bidder on the, on who really puts the bid in, so.
So someone just bid in for what they were willing to pay to
Per, yep.
Per year, and then we'll sign it again with them.
Yep, so you, you guys are authorizing me to do that, so
Yep.
I'll have to, uh, when the bids come in, I'm sure I'll have to give Jay, let him see on the, on, I think it's, pick the highest bid and go with it.
Highest responsibly.
Yep. So if everything, everybody's okay with that, I just need a motion to approve it.
Very good. This is to allow you to collect bids?
Yeah, yeah, well, it allowed me to collect bids and then I'll, then in this, I will assign a bid, you know, I'll, I'll name the winner of the bid, you know, whoever, whoever puts in the highest bid on it.
Is that something we do every year, can we vote this first one in for, for a year?
So this is this has a three-year, I can, we can continue with this lease for the next two to three years.
Okay.
As long as, like on, on the last guy that did it, I mean, we'd have continued it until the complaint come up that hey, you're parking your stuff over there, and so, well, let's just terminate it, we'll, we'll clarify all that.
You know, want this stuff parked there, but, but the only thing they can, whoever leases it, the only thing they can do is cut hay, right? They can't park separate pair but animals over there and that.
Nope. Just cut hay, so.
That was a question I was thinking about looking over this, is, is it just implied that, you know, obviously, somebody that leases this, gets hurt on property, we're not responsible? And their equipment, you know, sometimes people, they'll say, well, you said we could cut hay off of it, well, they hit a stump or a big rock, break the cutter. I'm like, oh, the city owed me money, they said this was hay ground. They didn't tell me that it was possible, they basically could break my equipment, now I'm out five thousand dollars. Is that, is there something that we need to, that we could put in there to make sure that, say, I'm not responsible for that, or is that just implied legally that I don't have that problem?
That, that's covered legally with the um, court immunity with the city bands.
Okay.
And it, it looks like they're required to carry insurance as well, so they
Yes, when all those bids come in, I'll get them to Jay, he'll look over them, he'll weed through the, the ones that are, are uh legal, you know, that are following all the rules of the agreement, and probably tell me which one to approve.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'm excited.
Shy makes motion.
I'll second.
Matt seconds.
Alexis?
Yes.
Ryan? Kyle, sorry.
Yes.
Jessica, yes. Matthew?
Yes.
Bye.
Next item on agenda is resolution number one one dash two zero two five.
Resolution authorizing purchase of a motor grader.
Uh, if you remember, uh, last city council meeting, Dustin brought this up to you guys, trying to find ways to uh cut stuff out of our budget for upcoming years, since we're dealing with this whole X N A stuff. And we're, we're always gonna need a road grader, so this Oki offered to sell his road grader to us, and that's the one we're leasing right now, so that our guys are familiar with it and stuff. Uh, this is the information, the, the VIN number and stuff, and they ask the price, a hundred and three thousand. Uh, that would come out of, we got two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars back from uh what we paid for the easements for the waterline relocation for the X N A access road. The Nacaline, sorry, on that. That's all the, so we'll use a hundred and three, my, I'm wanting to use a hundred and three of that out of that easement money.
And essentially, we were spending seventy-five thousand a year or so, just is it twenty-five thousand dollar difference?
Actually, we were spending a hundred though.
Yeah.
He said it was fifteen grand a year for maintenance as well.
Oh, yeah, but I think he said that was gonna still stay.
Yeah.
We're so gonna have to maintain it every year, but it was cut, cut seventy-five plus a year out of that.
And with, with the yearly maintenance, what's the life expectancy on this piece of equipment though?
Matt, I can't, I mean, I can't answer that for you, but I mean, we'll
Like, we're not gonna pay a hundred and three thousand dollars for a piece of equipment and have it dead in two years, right?
No, no, like
No, I, I'll be honest, I own equip, heavy equipment, my husband and I do, and we, we bought multiple over a hundred thousand dollar percent equipment that we've had years and years, so I mean, you maintain them, like things obviously have to change, like blades or tracks
Right.
pieces of attachments that go on it, welds or whatever, but as long as you maintain it, it, it does you good. What I, I, I visited Dustin about this, because I was also very curious about the machine itself, but we, our guys are the ones that have put the hours on this machine. So all the hours that have been put on it, we've put on it, and they're very, very low relatively compared to other comparables that I researched.
So like, I, I mean, I got a John Deere, right, but it's a, it's attracted on a road grader, but it's, it's fifteen years old, but I maintain it.
Okay.
It all depends on how you
Sorry, I'm ignorant with having a machinery, that's not my forte, guys. Uh, I just want to make sure if we're investing, I think it's a great idea, that helps save us money, but if we're investing, I want to make sure it's, you know, for the long haul and not just a Band-Aid on a problem.
No, it's, it's definitely for long haul. I, I, I can see us keeping it for
Do you know if they're following any kind of like preventive maintenance steps on all the equipment that we already have?
Yes, so they are. So Dustin's pretty, pretty particular about that.
Okay, so
And so James uh is actually our mechanic.
Hmm.
And so, I mean, he, he brings everything in for lubing, for greasing, and it's, that is certain time and stuff.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion.
Sure, makes motion.
I'll second.
Six seconds.
Alexis?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next item on agenda is department committee reports. Has anybody got anything? Counselor, got anything for any department heads?
Jerry, how are the, the rate of the new, the new construction, new houses coming along? The rate of, of the new houses coming along, they looked up and all that. Because I know we have some pretty, pretty fast ones coming.
Oh, what gap coming in for destruction this year? Well, uh, that subdivision, both of you guys, well, actually, these two guys did some of those uh, four permits, so they built eight houses and they're kind of just stalled.
Yeah.
Well, he's gone back for more, so uh, that's kind of off. Is that faster question you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, because we, I know, we had pretty good growth numbers built in there, and obviously, it's where we get some of our revenue.
The other one straight behind us, it's because they have a hundred and two, since they get their first row is paid to get their water across the street, get it hooked up.
Oh, yeah, they have their third and second there, all right.
That's a long road. Well, it's taken them so long, I'm ready to issue some permits, but so that's the two subdivisions, we're wrapping up the duplexes north of that subdivision, they're, they're done, so they're, they still matter what.
Your files.
So we used to have silver metals, it's the other one.
Yes, still, piece of metals, that's often, that's the one going through, I was calling, it's bricks and homes are building these places in there, and they're about to build that, I say by fall, that'll be done.
Okay.
So that'll be the two next big ones, other than our sewer and everything getting hooked up there, that's when everything else go release.
No builders right in their feet?
Say yeah.
No builders right in their feet or anything?
That, that feels like we're not, I don't Well, the Matt code enforcement, code enforcement, say a lot of hog grass, especially in the Mice Valley, so yeah, they give the kill ways.
Uh, you know anybody on the kill way?
I know.
We do have some uh a commerce, some commercial coming in too, uh, whenever we can know more about that, they'll make an announcement, we will. Uh, so we just got off the phone with somebody this afternoon, and we got some
Like they're up toward city council, it's like, like we said at five o'clock.
So I hope, hopefully the ones we can announce were bringing actually jobs, you know, a lot of few jobs into the city, so.
You mean, uh, above and beyond what's happening in the
Yes, yeah. So we'll, we'll get more information.
Above that, a little, like morning, once I pay the little coffee or stuff that's already in there.
Yep.
Cool. Thank you, I'm hoping some things in as well, that's, that, that looks, that's reasonable, that, uh yeah, of course, I believe, I think, that Nash, Nash Electric is coming, and they're gonna be located in front of the subdivision across from the fire station. Where do we, uh, Nash Electric, overnight, which are a little office complex there, and the, actually, their whole headquarters here. Loveable, yeah, so.
Yeah, so we, uh, when, when they call us on commercial, you know, with Jeremy, I'll both tell, you were you know, Jeremy will just tell them straight up, you know, what you gotta do, what we expect out of you, and uh that were, were super easy to, to deal with. And I, I mean, we're just, we're getting some hits on it, so, which is good, you know, some stuff that'll hopefully bring in some uh maybe not so much sales tax, but jobs. And also that'll be, that'll be good for the area as well.
So to answer your original question, yeah, they're, they're kind of, or they should be on target as far as, uh, in the the market this year.
The subdivision next to Dollar Stores, they should start.
They already asked me for six permits already, it's
Yeah.
There he is, and we want to make sure that roads pays, because they're, they've been tracking out red clay as well, I said, no, I said, let's get that paid, get that whole section paid, which I thought they were, I thought you said that they got the herbs, they're, they're ready to
I'm trying, we're trying to figure out a budget, mid-year budget, for you guys with the whole airport stuff going on, of what, what I gotta take it down to, and cut it to, and so we've, you know, we're trying to hit some of these developers up and seeing what their anticipation, they're, that they're gonna be building this year, so we can kind of figure that in on our revenue side of it, you know.
They said they just have commercial too, in front of, so, so you guys have been talking to anybody, uh?
I think right now, we don't have any commercial lots that don't have something planned on it besides one, that's gonna be on the west side of where Nash is putting in.
Yeah, it's
I mean, all the commercial lots that, that we've encouraged builders to build, and they build, have now, or are, are gonna have occupants in.
Good deal. I saw that Randy was pushing dirt, I don't know what's going on there, I haven't heard, heard anything there, but, you know, we'll get with it, see what's up.
What about the movement for the lot next door with the
So I had the Mr. Oki reach out to him, because they're friends, and uh, it's gotta be built by twenty-six, by the end of twenty-six. Uh, they're, they're in another town right now, uh, waiting to get approval and stuff, and we told him, Jeremy has already told him, hey, it's already a zone for it, you know, all you, just submit your plans, and you can be building within two weeks.
Right, okay.
You know, so uh
But that's still the plan, it's still in process?
Yep, it's still, because it's, it's already been approved by Sonic.
Right.
So uh, what he told Tim Oki was, it's already been approved by corporate, so it's, it's going in, and they're putting it, they put a deadline on each one of them, and he has to have the ones that he got approved in by the end of twenty-six.
Gotcha, okay.
He was hoping to already be out here, he said he should have already been out here, if he wasn't being kind of held up someplace else.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jerry.
You bet.
Thanks, Jerry. Anybody else, any council member do anything for any department heads? Next item on agenda is approval of the May two thousand twenty-five financial reports.
Sydney, are we still utilizing the collections for dispute accounts?
We are, um, they don't use it a lot, so trying to get as much account as possible.
Okay. Is it proven to be beneficial when we do have to use them?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody got questions on financials?
Make a motion, what's up?
This makes motion.
I'll second.
Alexis, seconds.
Alexis?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is the mayor's report, uh got a visitor, Mr. Mark Scott, he's with the Gentry School District, and I'll let him kind of stand up, introduce himself, and we're excited to have him here.
Thank you, and I appreciate you having me to, to the late agenda to be able to speak, but um, just wanted to come and introduce myself, my name is Mark Scott, the director of community engagement for the school district. Um, on behalf of Dr. Borrells, our superintendent and Gentry Public Schools, we just wanted to wish you a hello and a welcome. Um, and a thank you for all you've done to support the Gentry Public Schools. My position is a new position, it fulfills Dr. Borrells um, idea to become the Chick-fil-A of school districts in the state of Arkansas. We want to, it wants to be our pleasure to serve our students, our faculty, our staff, our parents, our families. And we want to be able to say yes a lot more than we say no when they're requests, when there, there are things that, that happen in our school district. Now, he will point out to you, we can't sell you hamburgers like Chick-fil-A, you know, we can't always, we're not gonna always make everybody happy, but we want to be uh, more in the community, more engaged in how we uh develop our community relationships, uh, from business development to how we can place our students in great situations when they graduate, in the internships, along the line. Um, we know that our success is your success and vice versa, your success is our success. And we're really thankful for the way we've engaged together throughout our time together. A few stats, few things that are really just, we just graduated a hundred and thirty students. And a hundred and twenty of them are either going to college and trade school or joining the military, so that's just a, a fantastic stat. The other twelve, ten, they're still trying to figure out what they want to do with their lives, and we think there are great things in their future as well, but also, we have students in internships this summer with construction companies. Some of our graduates are going to Oklahoma State, to other colleges, to the major in food science and animal science, so they can come back to our communities um, and do amazing things. Um, and just some, some wonderful stats there, but one stat I heard today too that really impressed me is more than ninety-five percent of our teachers are returning for the next school year. Now, you hear stories in the news and other places about how, how difficult it is, it was really remarkable that people who teach at Gentry want to be there, and there's a reason they want to be there, because they love their students, they do a fantastic job, what they do. Um, and they have opportunities to go to the big four, uh, but they bypass those because they have the support of their principals in their school district. So uh, the best thing about my job is my office location, my workspace. If you've ever worked, I, I used to work at Walmart Corporate Headquarters in Communications, and I worked in a little cubicle, but now my office um is right on the intermediate school playground, so if, from about eleven o'clock to two o'clock, I get a lot of screaming kids playing joyfully, and if you've ever worked in a cubicle environment, you realize that that's the voice of angels out there, as you, you hear that, but uh, I get knocks on my door occasionally, and one is a student uh who likes to check in and ask questions, she's a third grader, now a fourth grader. And she is from High Falls, and she likes to talk about her community, where she's from, likes to talk about her day, um, and just engage in, in that, and um, she, um, that, last time I saw her before school, it was her saying she didn't want school to end, she wanted it to go on uh, through the summer, just because she was having such a good time in our school district. And that really hit me, because schools should be a place where kids enjoy going, right? And that's what we want to do, and that's what we want to provide, so um, it's an exciting time to be at Gentry, our village just was restored, which means that we're expanding our middle school. And we're also building a brand-new multipurpose arena that will benefit the community, uh, as well as our students and our staff, so um, exciting times that are coming for Gentry, and we appreciate your support through that. Um, Dr. Borrells is always open for a phone call, if you have any questions, uh, we'll stop by, visit any of our schools, you're always welcome. Um, but I'll be your liaison as well, you'll probably see a lot of major meetings, just to kind of check in and see what's going on in High Falls, and how we can help you guys. Um, and so go forward, anything I can do to help, please let me know. Thank you, thank you again, I appreciate, I have to pioneer, we appreciate that, our, our city mayor is a proud pioneer as well.
Oh, yeah.
Thankful for your support.
Yep, all my kids go there and we, we enjoy it, well, Lexi's kids, you know.
Couple over two looks.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to take them back.
Yeah, like, like, thank you.
I've watched, uh, I've watched High Falls and, and the Gentry School District grow over, over the years since I've been alive, and it's just, uh, what Dr. Bowles is doing is, is the advertising and stuff is, the outreach, I mean, it's just awesome, I mean, he's getting a lot of, and you're right, I mean uh, my kids are one of them, they didn't really like going to school, and now they're, it's, you know, when you, when you got a, a leader that, you know uh, is, like Dr. Bowles, you know, the, the job that he's doing, you know, it makes the teachers happier, the teachers make the kids happier, and, and it, it just makes everything better, so.
When you give your teachers who are well-educated and well-prepared the opportunity to teach without a lot of the red tape and a lot of the things, get it I free in one of the big four over here, and the, before we can relocate over to Gentry, um, and it's a whole different ballgame there, we still our community that gives police escorts to our state tournament teams as they leave
Yep.
uh, to go to state tournaments, and some of those things will never change, because much like you and your growth, uh, we want our growth to be smart, to be well-managed, and well-maintained, because uh, we, we are growing, we know that. Uh, we want it to be a positive growth.
I will say one thing, you know, when the girls got sent, boys got sent to state for baseball and softball. I would like, it'd be nice to have a little bit more of a notice, because I'd like to have been there, you know, because when I was playing ball, we'd get sent off to state. The whole town would line up, you know, down Pioneer Lane and, and right in front of the fire station and stuff, so that's, uh, that's my wife, it's like, did, did you even know? She's like, no, because we'd, we'd have definitely went, you know, and I was
Yeah, we're not right before fifth grade, children. I will say I will say, do for me, I, we, my kids started um, at Evening Star, went first up in Eventville, we were in Cape Springs. And so we felt like a, it felt like a small community when we were there, we went through that tornado while we were there, so it felt really small, and whenever it got time for us to relocate over here. I was excited, cause I was like, oh, I loved the idea of a small school district, and I was actually disappointed. And then, like, since we've been here though, like, like what he's saying, it's been so crazy cool, like, my kids are upset when school ended. It's just been like a nine-day difference in experience, like, it's been a lot of fun, I feel like we've been involved in a lot of stuff, I feel like there's a lot of excitement around everything the kids do, and. We, we love it.
I love a bunch of the school board members to keep Dr. Borrells happy.
They're, they're doing a great job, I feel like they definitely said they're gonna do something and done it. And instead of waited around, or, you know, whatever, like, even that, that advertisement you were talking about, our son was in that, and he was like, so thrilled. To go in there and scream Gentry pioneers.
Oh, great, that's good to hear, that's great.
It's been fun.
We're, we love to hear those sort of things, and yes, you're, um, next year, we will be a lot more, we had a correction of errors meeting where we discussed that specifically. How we can get the community more engaged in that, so. Uh, with our new athletic facilities, we hope to host more regional tournaments.
Yeah.
And even state tournaments in the future, where our local businesses will really benefit from that.
Well, I told Dr. Borrells, but be sure to pass along to him, that we think he's doing a wonderful job, and.
I will, I will definitely do that, and um, yes, we appreciate all of the work he's doing, but. He wanted me to specifically uh, express his appreciation for all the help and all the support you guys have given him.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if you guys, there was an article come out in a paper a couple weeks ago, and it was the towns growing, uh, the size and. You know, uh, the speed of the towns growing in the area, the, they, since the last census till, till now. And High Falls was the second fastest growing city behind P Ridge, I don't want P Ridge never was, but High Falls is fifteen point two percent.
Yeah, it's fairly about that.
And uh, you know, they're saying our population now is just north of twenty seven hundred residents, uh, from fifteen eighty-three. You know, so that's, that's a pretty steep climb, you know, so with that being said, you know, when I seen that, I immediately called Tiffany. We got talking about census numbers, you know, with what we're going through, I thought, hey, we need to reach out and find out. How much, if we, if we done a special census, number one, how much it would cost, and number two, how much it would give us in return. Uh, so we're trying to find them numbers out, we, we, we know what the return would be. We're trying to find out the cost, once I know the cost, if it's beneficial, it will come to you guys to make that decision, if you guys want to do it, so. Uh, it will almost. Almost, almost double what we're getting from. Now, it won't almost, yeah, almost double what we're getting from the county's side of it right now. If, if uh, Tiffany had her numbers double-checked by the, the state people, so, like I said, whenever we get accurate numbers. Uh, if I think it's feasible, uh, then we'll bring it back to you guys, so. Uh, the last thing I got, and this is for you, Shy, we're trying to do the park again, Silver Meadows up there. For the north end of town, we're having a real problem getting phone calls back, and we really need to know by the end of the week. If, if uh, they're gonna let, you know, get on board, I guess, with the, with the park ideal up there in the open. Uh, Cassidy really needs a phone call back before Friday, otherwise, we're just gonna submit to upgrade our park here. So, I mean, it's, there's a lot of legwork to Cassidy, Cassidy's gotta do a lot of uh, public hearings, uh, so it takes months. You know, and this is all, I think it's all gonna be done by August, September. So she's, I mean, she's got two or three months worth of stuff to do in about three months, three or four months.
Sure, I'll make sure we get it.
So, if uh, if you can just let me know by Friday, if I don't hear anything, then I'll just tell her to pursue, you know, uh, pickleball court, some upgrades here in our city park.
We'd love to have it up there.
I would love to have it up there too, so I think.
It's a hard.
I think it's, I think it'd be a great addition up there, you know, with the housing we got up there, we need a park up there.
Yep.
You know, so, this is the way we can get that, get that built, also, uh, I'd, I'd, I'd love to have it up there, and we. Always just, just add on here, just budgeting that, to add on down here. Thanks, sir. Uh, that's all I got on the, on the mayor's report, uh, besides, don't forget, we got Chicago Ball Saturday. It'll be a blast, Tiffany's done a, a good job of uh, advertising, like, we got five teams now, right, Tiffany? Uh, she worked, uh, been working tirelessly on putting the baskets together and stuff, we're gonna have a hot dog cart up there. Uh, downtown dogs, when we sell hot dogs, so, it'll be a fun time, and probably pretty comical too, watching some of those old people try to run. Uh, uh, planning commission meeting on the twenty-fourth uh, June. Uh, City Hall will be closed on July fourth, for Independence Day, next city council meeting is July eighth. Has council got anything?
We are good with the firework?
With the park, I mean, the church. Yeah, we've uh, we've, we talked to Randy Roth, uh, he can allow people to park right there, on the, be on the west side of the, of the store. And then on the south side of the PD, on the east side of the road there on Walker, they could park there. And then also on the west side, we've got another park on the west side, it's not, it's a lot of trees in there, but they can park there, you know, a handful of cars in there. I'm gonna have Dustin, his guys, brush all of that stuff down, and so, basically, more safe for, for people walking in and out of there. Uh, so, so yeah, we've, we've got park, parking's gonna be a problem in the future, uh, we're gonna have to figure something out about that, uh. But, as of this year, the park is, park is covered.
I mean, X N A updates, yeah.
So we got court to twenty-six, twenty-seventh, and that's right now, that's, I mean, you guys know what I know, uh, where they're, uh. The judge ordered us to eschew our sales tax, we had to put that uh, money back in the, in the uh, account there. The day that they filed the annexation paperwork. Uh, we sent off our appeals to the court of appeals, so we're just waiting.
Is there anything we can do?
All right now, just, just wait right along with me, pray, that, I mean, the, that justice has done. Common sense wise.
This is a agent? Like an Arkansas?
The judge making the order, I, yeah, he's local judge.
Go ahead, Ryan, I was just gonna say, um. Who might wanna. Press is uh, releasing, I mean, I don't know if you watch the news lately, but they had a story out the other night, it's, it's all slandered. Favor of the airports, and that's, so, I don't know if there's a way, or. I may know somebody, but uh, that would get a new story slammed it in our favor.
If you know somebody that will per, per print what we say, yeah, then yes.
They door knocked our houses, they just, well, put a story out that's not in.
The only, the only person that has printed the truth, as far as reporter goes, is Randy Muller.
That's what I was wondering too, is like, is there, like, a way we can get louder, or we can.
So, no, I mean.
For our cities, or at least bring awareness around?
We, we've tried releasing statements, you know, so that's why it's on paper. And I think uh, one news station did put that, you know, exactly what we said, read what we said, and the other one's kind of cut and penciled and pieced. You know what we said, but yeah, we're not, we, we've got a, a uh. Uh, a woman, a lady, a lady that's, that does our PR for us. And uh, yeah, we're just getting, I mean, we're putting out the truth, but it's not getting reported. What we're putting out is not getting reported, so yes, if you know somebody, give me their contact, if I'll try them, if they'll put out the truth.
I'll reach out to her and see.
Okay. But yeah, we need some help.
Connect with them, I have a pretty large social media following that I wouldn't mind utilizing.
So yeah, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that's, gets said in there that just irritates me, but. You know, when, like I said. We, we put out our statement, and our statement don't get brought up, so, now I know why a lot of people, including myself, don't watch news. Cause they don't put out the truth, but anyway. Anybody got anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Jessica makes a motion.
Alexis?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thanks, counsel.